Additionally, the city attorney is currently out. And gracing us with monitoring over the course of our meeting this evening is Mr. Sky Woodruff from Myers-Nave, and he has also called in on our phone. So, I'd like to welcome Mr. Woodruff. And welcome you too, Mayor.
Thanks, Mike, Mayor.
You're welcome. There's not many fun things we get to do, but this is definitely one of them. I had the opportunity this evening to recognize our Employee of the Month. And I'd like to call Nadine Silva forward. How are you, Nadine? This is the information. I don't know how accurate it is, I think it is. But, oh, yeah. Nadine is an accountant, too, with the Administration and City Finance Department. And this is a little bit of the background about Nadine. Nadine Silva has been named the City of Turlock Employee of the Month for August 2017. Nadine was nominated for her great customer service to both external and internal customers. As an accountant, she knows the importance of detail and transparency, and her work is a reflection of just that. Nadine always goes the extra mile in everything that she does. She will put aside her own work to assist others and is still able to finish her responsibilities timely and efficiently. I understand you're going to be holding a seminar on how to do that later. Nadine is a great teacher and always helps her coworkers with a smile on her face. Nadine earned her BA from California State University Stanislaus while working full-time. She was hired in 1998 as an account clerk. In 2000, she was promoted to Accountant One and then to Accountant Two in 2007. Right? Okay. Personal hobbies: Nadine is proud mother of two daughters, Marissa and Megan, and is happily and busily involved in their activities. So, with that background, this certificate as the Employee of the Month for August 2017. May it be known that this certificate is awarded to Nadine Silva. We hereby express our sincere appreciation for your outstanding employment, performance, productivity, and commitment to the City of Turlock. Your dedication and hard work have been recognized by your peers. Therefore, you are awarded this Employee of the Month certificate for August 2017. On behalf of the entire City Council and fellow coworkers, may I extend our recognition and sincere appreciation for your dedicated service. In witness whereof, Gary Soyseth, Mayor of the City of Turlock, has set his hand and caused the seal of the City of Turlock to be affixed this 12th day of September 2017. Gary Soyseth, Mayor, myself, on behalf of the balance of the council. She's got a 20-minute speech prepared, so...
Yes, I'll try to make it short. Well, I'd like to thank everyone, Vice Mayor, council, city staff, for being here. It's truly an honor to be nominated and selected as the Employee of the Month. We have so many amazing people that work at the city that I think any of them should have been up here. But I'm sure some have and some will be. I want to thank Julie and Kelly. They've been a great support and encouragement to me and helping me to continually grow in my position with the city. I also work with an amazing group of people. My coworkers are supportive and we back each other up, and I could not ask to be on a better team. Along with my coworkers, everyone in all the departments, I can always count on them. We work great together, and I truly feel blessed for having such a great group of people to work with. As Vice Mayor here said, I've been here almost 20 years, and I feel privileged and honored to have the opportunity to be at the City of Turlock. I look forward to many more years here to work with all of you. And he did talk about my daughters. I do have two amazing daughters, Marissa and Megan, and they do encourage me to strive to do my best every day at home and at work, so I'd like to thank everyone.
Okay, now, where's the official photographer? We, see if we got one of these.
Thank you very much.
Oh, yeah, I thought somebody did. I thought somebody did, yes. Oh, wait, how is my hair?
Don't worry, you cut off your head.
Gotcha. Thank you.
Thank you. And for our next presentation this evening, I'm going to call up Chief Adam Farr. Chief?
Thank you, Vice Mayor. Please, don't leave, Vice Mayor. Vice Mayor, council members, and Mayor Soyseth, thank you for this opportunity to recognize one of our police officers and several of our citizens, namely, is Mr. Mendoza here today, tonight? Is he able to make it? No, great. Well, thank you, council, for allowing this time of recognition. As most of you know, on the evening of June 4th, around midnight, there was a terrible accident on the off-ramp of Lander Avenue 99, where an individual, a 19-year-old young man, suffered a medical emergency and went off the roadway, and his accident created a huge fire. Officer Adam Neep self-dispatched to that call, and what that means is, he wasn't sent because it's the freeway and it's usually a CHP, but he heard the call and he heard our fire department responding, their rescue efforts, and he responded. Meantime, a citizen, Mr. Jose Mendoza, who is not here, stopped along with several other citizens on the off-ramp side of the freeway where you see the chain link fence, and they saw that the vehicle was turned over, there was a fire, and they saw an individual struggling. Mr. Mendoza, who himself was suffering from health issues, was able to get over the fence with the help of other citizens that were there and was able to pull the individual from that burning wreckage and the field that was on fire around him. However, the gentleman had suffered a medical condition, and after he was recovering from that medical condition, he began to resist Mr. Mendoza's attempts to save him, which caused him to fall to the ground, and then the gentleman ran back into the fire. Mr. Mendoza thought the gentleman had passed away, and he was distraught over it. However, the gentleman had not. Officer Neep had arrived on the other side of the freeway, and with two other citizens who are also not here, Moses Garcia and Christian Flores, were immediately rendered aid to the gentleman who was in the fire, trying to walk away, still disorientated. So, Officer Neep ran into the fire, grabbed the individual, was having difficulty, and the two additional citizens ran and helped him, and Mr. Mendoza was pulled to freedom. The police department recognized Officer Neep with the Medal of Meritorious Service, and we also recognized Mr. Jose Mendoza, Citizen Certificate of Valor. Tonight, council is also recognizing their heroic efforts. Officer Neep, will you come forward, please? Officer Neep received Turlock Police Department's Medal of Meritorious Service. He put his life on the line and without hesitation saved a citizen with the help of additional citizens. He was awarded this medal, as I stated, in August, and tonight, council is recognizing him. Mayor Soyseth honored the police department by placing this ribbon on the previous recipient of the same medal, and in that tradition, I asked the Vice Mayor to do the same. Boy, you put it back in there pretty good, didn't you? I'll stand next to you. Would you like to say a few words? Officer Neep is a man of few words, but mighty action.
Where's Morgan? There you are. We now have a special presentation by Morgan Andre. Welcome, Morgan. Good to have you with us.
Hi. Thank you. Good evening, Mayor Soyseth, beautiful, and City Council. My name is Morgan Andre, and I'm the artist responsible for the work that's currently on display in the lobby just outside. I was asked by the Arts Commission to come speak and give a brief description of the series and what it's all about. So, this series is titled Abstract Landscapes. There are exactly 22 paintings in this exhibition, and they're all acrylic on canvas or acrylic and mixed media on canvas. This body of work has been very inspired by themes of direction, navigation, in the physical sense as well as the mental sense. And I've explored these ideas through the use of things like paint layers, well, through paint layers, and textures that imply things like sediment, levels of understanding, parameters, and masses of land. You may notice that the works contain the use, or line use, that suggests things like maps, topographic maps, trails or patterns, and overall have a lot of movement. And much of the series has been very much inspired by our geographical location here in the Central Valley. And I like how that can serve as a symbol for many natural systems and phenomena that we experience. The artist statement, that's at the beginning of the show on that wall, you may have noticed is rather unconventional compared to a normal artist statement. It consists only of a running list of nouns, adjectives, and verbs, and those are all things that I was thinking about during the production of these works as well as spending time with them after. And I did that in an effort to kind of create, give viewers just a suggestion or just a little bit of a direction and enable the search of their own, because that's what this whole series has kind of been for me. But that, in essence, is what the entire series is about, and if anyone has any questions or would like to discuss it further, please let me know. Love to do that. But additionally, I just wanted to say thank you so much to Mayor Soyseth, everyone on the council, on the Arts Commission, and especially Eric Schultz and Parks and Rec for making this happen and allowing me this opportunity. I really appreciate it. And also, as a local artist, it means so much that you guys invest your time and allow opportunities like this for the arts in Turlock. So, thank you very much.
And before you leave...
Yes.
Go ahead. And before you leave, thank you for the gift. If any of you have not taken the opportunity to review these wonderful pieces on the walls in the hall outside, spend a couple of moments to do so. Couple of hours, until we close, anyway. It's absolutely wonderful. Morgan, you've captured a lot there, and I think it's well worth our time to visit and to spend and invest our time. Thank you again so much.
Thank you. Good to have you.
Okay, this evening, we do have a special briefing on the Turlock Regional Aviation Association. Mr. Todd Smith, who is the president. Welcome, Todd.
Thank you, Mayor Soyseth and Vice Mayor DeHart. Again, my name is Todd Smith. I'm the president of the Turlock Regional Aviation Association, and we are under a management agreement with the City of Turlock to manage the city's municipal airport out on East Avenue. This is a series of quarterly reports that I'll be giving for the near future, just to give the council an update on where we're at, activities, public events that have occurred. Having said that, this past Saturday, we had our annual Young Eagles event. And for those of you that are not familiar with that, this is sponsored by the EAA Association. And I believe it was started by Chuck Yeager, was part of the EAA organization exposing children around the country to flight. This year, they've marked the 2,000,000th flight of a child, which we were just a small part of that. This past Saturday, we flew 102 children from about 8:30 to 4 o'clock in the afternoon, and it's, if you've never been out there and seen these kids, it's an amazing experience. The thing that was really exciting to me is that we had promoted that we encourage handicapped children to come out, because a lot of people think that, you know, they wouldn't have access to an aircraft, and we were able to make that happen, and we had a number of them that came out, and it was quite an experience for the whole family, you know, to see a child go out. So, that was great. We're planning for next year. And I would like to acknowledge Allison and Parks and Rec for their participation. Starting three years ago, they started taking an extremely active role in providing an area for children, children that couldn't fly, but siblings that were there to keep them occupied. So, they've ramped their game up every year, and it shows. On the business perspective, I can come tonight and tell you that we do not have any hangars available. Every single one of our hangars is now rented, and we actually have a waiting list, and I think that was caused by a recent dramatic increase at the Modesto Airport. It was, went 150, 200% increase on rents, very, very dramatic. Lot of pressure from Merced and Castle. Castle's very non-conducive for small aircraft, as you can imagine. So, Turlock, all of a sudden, just becomes this raw gem among all of them, and we're seeing the results of that. So, there's going to be pressure for us, city, particularly, to get some hangars developed out there, which is exciting. Other than that, we continue to explore other revenue sources at the airport. As reported before, we have some farming operations on the airport that is allowed for non-aviation-related use per the FAA's approval, and that's proving to be extremely beneficial for both parties. So, we'll continue to look for those opportunities. Lastly, as the council is aware, we were in a process of applying for some FAA grant money for some capital improvements at the airport, which Allison was right in the middle of, and what I'd like to do at this time is just defer to her and have her give you an update on that. Thank you very much.
Good evening, Mayor and Council and Vice Mayor. As Mr. Smith alluded to, as you know, we were in a process with the FAA regarding our runway construction project, and bid process took place. We received the bids back, and unfortunately, our low bid came in much, much higher than we had anticipated. As a result, we were going to need to basically come back to this body to seek direction on how to proceed. Unfortunately, we ran into a time constraint with the FAA's deadlines, and so between us receiving the low bid numbers and strategizing on how to come back to council and when to be able to come back to council, council deadlines, or, excuse me, council dates and the FAA deadlines simply just did not match up. As a result of that, we were, we missed out on that particular funding opportunity for this particular fiscal year. However, we are in discussions this week on reprogramming the project for the future. Part of this discussion, though, we've learned a lot through this particular process, and so we really want to have a more engaged conversation with council through an airport workshop. We're working to schedule that for sometime after the first of the year so that we can have some dialogue about this particular project as well as future projects. So, with that, I'd be happy to answer any questions, or Todd's here as well.
Any questions? I do have one. You talked about loss of funding during this fiscal year. Is that federal fiscal or city fiscal?
It's federal fiscal year, and that's the problem, because their fiscal year ends at the end of September, and so they were having to have everything kind of wrapped up and programmed, and because we weren't going to be able to come back until essentially this meeting, they weren't comfortable with the delay, and so they chose to move forward without us at this particular point. But, we're not out of the running, we just, it's just a delay. So, we're, again, we're trying to figure out the best strategy of when to reprogram the project.
And I guess the concern is whether that's fiscal 2018 or fiscal 2019, so that's what I was trying to come down.
Yes, and that's, and they will basically tell us when the funding will be available.
Thank you. Thank you very much, Todd. Really appreciate you. Okay, time for staff updates. Policy goals, implementation plan. Who leads us off this evening? Do we have anybody that's going to volunteer to lead us off this evening? Okay, how, we start off with administrative services. Have we got a report there? What kinds of folks missing this evening? How about developmental services? Mike Pitcock.
Good evening. On your, on the building activities for the month of August, we had 88, 155 permits, so it was a very high permit total for this month. All but 18 of them were completed through the expedited plan review process, so about 88% were through the expedited process, and we had nearly 400 inspections in August at 398. So, we had a very healthy and productive August in the building side. I can answer any questions you may have on the building activity. On engineering, there's probably a lot of interest in the Fulkriff and Golden State Boulevard progress. It is progressing with activity by the railroad. They are working on the gates and cantilevers. They've already, they've already completed the concrete crossing, so they're continuing to make good headway. Our traffic control or our traffic signal contractor is actually out there doing the underground work, putting all the conduits, pole boxes and so forth, and getting those set, as well as getting ready to set all the foundations for the poles. And we are working with TID. TID is tasked with undergrounding the overhead utility lines from Sodquiss at Fulkriff all the way to the transit center, and the reason we have to have those poles underground, all the electric utility lines undergrounded is the poles are actually in the location where the concrete curb, where the sidewalk needs to be. So, that really is a critical path at this point in time. We have to get TID out of the way, and they are, they have hired their contractor. The contractor's supposed to have begun, I don't know if they got started today or not, but hopefully soon they'll get done. Once that's done, our contractor mobilizes back, gets all the concrete work done, and once the concrete works done, we get it paid. So, we're a little behind there. We're probably looking at, at this point in time, I'm guessing, estimating maybe October, middle of October, as far as when it's going to be ready to open back up the traffic. On the transit center side, right next door, we have, the slab has actually been forced, all the utility work underneath slab has been installed, and then they actually have started the rough framing of the building itself. All the onsite underground is generally complete, and they are now grading and getting ready to ring in some of the concrete work and so forth tied to the parking lot. Then they plan to get all the aggregate base put in place before the wet season, therefore they have a nice, solid base in case we need fire equipment to get out there and so forth. So, that's on the engineering. Those are the kind of major projects that we're doing at this point in time, and I'd be happy to answer any questions you have on those.
Any questions? Do you read?
On the transit side, we have processed the purchase order for the four new transit buses that were, that the council approved last month. We're also, we've issued the purchase order for the 20 bus shelters with advertising panels and the 20 transit stop solar power lights, so we're hopeful to have those delivered at the end of September. So, we've looked to, hopefully, to start mobilizing, setting those out and getting those things, those new bus stops set. Then we'll be working with our advertising consultant or contractor, and they will be working with us to get ads put on those panels. So, and then lastly, on the transit side, we've completed the evaluation of the four proposals for the next transit operator, and we'll be bringing this to you on the 26th of September for consideration. So, be happy to answer any questions you may have on transit.
No questions, but perhaps a comment. I know that the, there was a long, much longer discussion about advertising on buses and stops and so on and so forth. That started quite some time ago, and I'd just like to give a shout out to Councilmember Booblack for initiating that discussion. I think that she was instrumental in getting that started. I'd like to thank you, Amy. That was great.
Absolutely, and those revenue dollars that come in from the advertisement now is benefiting us on that fare box ratio side. So, the state of California and Stan Cog have made it so they verify, yes, they are indeed a revenue source and they can be used to offset the fare box ratio. So, it's a big benefit to us.
That's great.
And on the Measure L update, staff is currently working on the West Main project. We're nearing the completion of the design. We're looking to, last thing we've got to complete is the planning profiles, so they're continuing to work on those. We're looking at, hopefully, have this out to bid in October, and then we hopefully have the end construction in the spring, because obviously, we're not going to be able to do a lot of that work in the wintertime, but it gives us the opportunity to bid this during a better bidding climate, and our goal is to be on the front end of all the work that gets completed in 2018, not towards the back end when everyone's filled and they're not giving us good prices. So, we're moving forward with that. And in staff is also, we have three projects in the first year. The second project was the Golden State project, and that was from West Main, from Main Street to Dell, and we went out to our outside resources and asked them to give us a price for the design on that. Came back at 109,300, so it was fairly expensive. So, we're looking at another alternative right now. We're evaluating the idea of doing design build. Public contract that allows us to use design build process if it's over $1 million. So, I've reached out to a contractor, and he's got me in touch with the engineering firm that specializes in this, so we're trying to figure out, can it, will it work at this size of a project? And if it will work at this size of a project, what's the best way to do it? And do you have a template that we could use so that when we don't have to reinvent the wheel? And then, the third project is East Avenue from Golden State Boulevard to Dovenberger. That also includes a piece that's in the county that we work with the county to, so we do it all at one time. Right now, we're waiting for the utility evaluation to be completed so we have a firm understanding of what the scope of work is. Once we have that, we'll either A, go out to design outside resources, or we'll add it to the design build if the timing works out real well. So, there's your update for Measure L. We continue to move forward on all three projects, trying to expend the dollars that the, our good community members expect us to spend, and spend them correctly.
Any comments, questions? Councilmember Askett?
Yeah, so you say the bids will go back out for West Main in October, mid-October, someplace like that. Do we have any estimated timeframe on the Golden State or East Avenue?
Again, the Golden State side, the, we wanted to have it designed from our outside firm because we need to focus on West Main. The price came in pretty high, so we're looking at the alternative idea. If we did go out and hire them to do the work, we were looking at a possible bid date around March of next year. East Avenue, we have not started as far as getting bids on anything as far as the design work, because we're still waiting on the utility evaluation to be completed so that we can make sure that we get the scope of work correct, because you don't want to do change orders whenever possible, because you don't get a good price on it.
Maybe you could speak just briefly, Mike, to the difficulty we've encountered with respect to available contractors. May go without saying, but nonetheless...
Yeah, the contractor community with the, with the Measure L, just the amount of federal dollars as well as SB 1 dollars that are going to be coming our way is, well, they're pretty booked up with work. And, you know, during the downtime, 2006, '08 range, not only did the city constrict as far as our workforce, so did all the contracting firms, and many of them haven't ramped back up to those 2008 times. So, there's, you have a kind of a perfect storm where you don't have a lot of, they don't have a lot of crews out there. There's also the issue that's happened, and we're seeing it even in our area, where many of those people that lost their jobs, they either retrained to do other things, or they left the state to work elsewhere. So, they're, everyone's having difficulty. We're having difficulty on finding engineers, building side. They're finding it difficult to actually have good, solid contractors come in and work for them. So, we've got this perfect... So we've got this perfect storm. We've got a lot of money and we've got a lot of road projects that are going to be getting done. But we also have, the workforce is pretty small and then our unemployment rate's pretty low right now. So it's kind of a perfect storm where we continue to move forward and try to, you know, hammer through all that.
Great. Thank you very much. Appreciate that. Thank you, Mike.
Thank you.
Fire department. Chief Carlson, nothing this evening? Okay. Municipal services? No? Parks and rec. Parks, art and rec.
Amongst that, and airport. Throw them in there too. Good evening again, Mayor and Council. I wanted to let the community know that the wooden plate structure at Donnelly Park will be temporarily closed between September 19th and 24th. Through a fabulous partnership with Turlock Sunrise Rotary, we are going to be having the structure resealed and many of the tiles are going to be redone. So we're very excited that that structure's going to get a little added attention thanks to Turlock Sunrise Rotary. And so after the 24th, it'll be opened again for use, but we did want to let everybody know it'll be temporarily closed. Thank you.
Thanks, Allison. Chief Amfar.
Vice Mayor, Mayor, council members. Thank you. At the last council meeting, I gave my public safety update and the mayor asked in regards to schools what the plan was for school opening. So I felt it was appropriate to come back with the outcome of the plan we put into effect. So having said that, I have some pictures. It's always good to have pictures, ladies and gentlemen. And if you, if you want to ever receive some of these notifications that you will see on the PowerPoint that's going up there in front of you, just like Turlock Police Department, you will get these Facebook postings. So having...
Time it?
That's okay. You know, just let it run. I don't want to take council's time. We're going to go ahead and just let these, these Facebook postings run. And if you could watch them, these are postings that went out on a time basis before school started. It was in conjunction not only with the police department's Facebook page. We utilized Turlock Unified School District's Facebook page, their social media. CSUS, we worked hand in hand with regarding their social media. We also worked on putting out a phone message to parents with me and the superintendent of schools. And on top of that, we put together flyers for the Vista Center because we knew that school was opening. And on top of that, we worked with allied agencies and our partners here within the city of Turlock. Mike Pitcock and his staff did an outstanding job in getting those crosswalks done on a timely basis. So some of the talking points I wanted to bring out, so our social media back-to-school events, as you can see by the postings, we began these postings in August 4th through the 24th. Overall, we reached 110,000 hits. So we're getting the messages out. On day one of the school opening for our public schools, we utilized all of our day shift officers. And we were lucky, we didn't have any calls coming in at that time. We utilized all our traffic officers and I brought in our core team, our community outreach engagement team, and put them into place and our lieutenant and myself. And we were able to hit every one of the school sites. The fire department helped us with one of our sites, so that was great too. So we were out at every single one of those sites. And we also were out at our private school sites, welcoming the kids back, giving them stickers and letting people see that you need to pay attention when operating a motor vehicle. We're not in 2040, and I think that's the problem when we're going to have the smart cars. They're saying it's going to be sooner than that. But, you know, we're human beings. We make mistakes and we have to understand that that car is a machine. It is not a phone booth. It is not a table where you're having coffee. It is a machine that you're operating and there are human beings around you and you've got to pay attention. That's the bottom line. So I wanted to put that out there. We did the flyers. Cal State assisted us with the flyers when we had the opening of the Vista. And we also conducted enforcement from August 14th to 9/11. We had 108 extra patrols in our traffic patrols. We had four traffic stops and two parking sites issued during the mornings and after at all schools. And that was the day of the school. The traffic safety unit conducted 52 extra patrols around the schools, making 51 traffic stops. Twenty percent resulted in educational warnings. And we issued 23 parking sites out of those. The traffic unit organized an enforcement operation focusing on pedestrian and bicycle violations. Our site team, we work in conjunction with the county agencies, Stanislaus County, the Sheriff's Department, Seres, Highway Patrol. Unfortunately, the day we chose was the day that Cal State, first day of school. And that was also the day that Modesto Police Sergeant was laid to rest. However, we were able to get several, several officers here from Seres PD, Oakdale PD and CSUS PD, which resulted in 51 vehicle stops, 31 pedestrian stops and 54 citations issued. As a note, just as a note, we've done the traffic education. We've put out our electronic signage. We've put out vehicles, whether they have an officer in them or not, just to make people aware. Mr. Pitcock's crew has gone through crosswalks. We've painted them. We've put fencing up to prevent people from crossing dividers. We've put signs up to say no right turn on a red light. Schools employing crossing guards. And in this case, we had an officer giving a ticket right across the street and we still had a traffic collision, a vehicle strike, a pedestrian. So the bottom line is we're going to do all the education we can. We're going to do all the enforcement we can. But you know, we're human beings, all of us. We make mistakes. So it's, it's on us to step up and pay attention. That's the report. So thank you very much for your time. I'm available for any questions.
Questions? No questions, but it's also somewhat indelicate to add an exclamation point to what the chief has said. But you know, folks, this is unacceptable, what's happening in our city with respect to speed, with respect to running lights, with respect to turning against pedestrians, with respect to crossing medians. This has got to stop. There's no two ways about it. It's not worth the extra minute that you may save if a life is taken or damage is done. It's just not worth it. Put yourself in the shoes of somebody that it happened to that will live with that experience at the balance of their lives. It's not cool. Please, please, please hear the message, adhere to the message. And we will continue to watch, continue to enforce and continue to pray that nothing additional or harmful happens. But please pay attention. Comes now time for public participation. We do have some speaker cards here. I'd like to call this evening on Diane Bartlett for our library. Welcome, Diane. We'll take some here, up here. I'd just like to remind everybody, we've got a full house this evening. We've got a full agenda this evening as well. Please, let's limit our shares to five minutes. And clerk, acting clerk will help us with that. Go ahead, Ms. Bartlett.
Thank you, Vice Mayor. Thank you, Council. And Mayor Choistet, that's by phone. And good evening to the members of the community. My name's Diane Bartlett. I'm supervising librarian here at the Turlock Library. And I really appreciate the time to talk a little bit about what's going on at the library. Next week is Pirate Week at the library, so come on in and do a pirate scavenger hunt. And kids can come on Tuesday, the 19th, at four and create their own pirate map. Then we'll be focusing for adults and teens will be focusing on citizenship. We're having a presentation from United States Citizenship and Immigration Services Department on how to become, the steps that you need to take on how to become a citizenship. That will be Monday, the 25th, at six. And then the next day, when, or the next two days later, on Wednesday, the 27th, at 5:30, we'll be targeting those planning for college and those dreamers. And although I know all that's all up in the air right now, but we do have someone from SCOE to come and talk to how to plan for college if you are under the DACA. And then going into October, just a couple of other things I want to bring up. We have lots of craft classes. On Monday, the 2nd, we'll be making monster wreaths. And later that evening, we'll be doing a family painting project. And the next week, we'll be doing some tech-to-tech class at nine, on the 9th, at 10:00 a.m. And on the 10th, at 4:00 p.m., kids are invited to enjoy Star Wars Reed's Day with us. And then finally, in October, we'll be starting computer basics classes every Wednesday at 3:00 p.m. And that's done by a trained volunteer. So please call us and sign up for that. And finally, and these programs, I wanted to let you know, these free programs are brought to you by the one-eighth of a cent dedicated sales tax that supports the library. And I think you're going to hear a little bit more about that in a couple of weeks. Thank you so much.
Thanks so much. Mr. Perez, please come forward, sir. I understand you've got something to share with us.
I'm a little bit nervous. Well, excuse me, but thank you, Councilmember.
Take your time.
It'll be hard. And good evening, Mayor and council members. My name is Ricardo Perez. I've been a long-term resident of Turlock for the last 42 years. I'm here before you to address the public safety concern that was brought up to my attention on August 31st, a little bit, about two weeks ago now. The area of concern is located at the intersection of Lyons and Colorado Avenue. It's a three-way intersection where Colorado Avenue has free-flowing traffic on both directions. It was there where I witnessed a near-missed incident involving my daughter and an SUV as she had veered across the middle of the street. For unknown reason, the driver was not paying attention and almost hit her. I contacted Turlock High School about the incident and I was directed to contact the Turlock Police Department. I did contact the Turlock Police Department and I made a report. I went back to Turlock High School. There I spoke with the lady about the incident and wondered where was the crosswalk personnel at the time of the incident? She replied, what time did it happen? And I replied back, it was about 7:35 in the morning. To which she then replied that crosswalk personnel was not there till 7:45 to help students cross Colorado Avenue. Long story short, I did not know that the lady I was talking to was the campus supervisor, She had commented to me that that was the area of concern, not only for students, but for the campus supervisors serving as crosswalk personnel. She explained, can you imagine having to go out there and stop traffic with no stoplight and no stop sign to help you out? I brought up the concern to the Turlock High School principal and officer outreach, the school onsite police officer. Throughout our conversations, the different individuals brought up a three-way stop sign. But they said it might not be possible because we do have a four-way stop sign at Colorado Avenue and Canal, up north of that. And then south of that, we have another four-way stop sign, Marshall and Colorado Avenue. So I came up with a solution. The solution that I have before you, and I hope it does get approved by the City Council and the engineering, it's called In-Roadway Working Light System. In short, it's a smart crosswalk. And basically what it is, is, I don't know if you guys have ever been out to college out there in Modesto, where you push a button and then your little flashes go off, warning drivers that somebody's crossing? That would be great if we could get that, not only for my daughter, but for the school personnel as well. Thank you.
Thank you very much, Mr. Perez. Appreciate that. Because we're talking cross-agency, so we're going to have to get a little cooperation and coordination going here. Chief, Mike, I know that we're both aware and we're on it, but perhaps we could follow up on that and see if we can't get something going with the school district. I go through that, interestingly enough, I go through that very intersection every morning, dropping kids off. And so I appreciate...
Exactly. The circumstance. Thank you very much, Mr. Perez.
Thank you very much, Council. Thank you.
Can we get the number, Chief, and coordinate with Mr. Perez? Say again?
Yeah.
Yeah.
We're still talking public participation, right? Just checking. Okay. Peter and Strong. Okay, we have several different speakers that have requested the opportunity to speak. Is it Danielle Reyes? Did I get that right? And I'd just like to once again remind our speakers that we do have a five-minute limit.
It's not starting yet, right?
It hasn't started till you get there and you actually start talking.
Good evening, council members and citizens of Turlock. I come to you today as a concerned citizen. I'd like to say I was a citizen of Turlock before I was even born. My parents met at CC Stanislaus in the 1980s. They saw each other across the quad and soon fell in love and had two kids. And here, me and my brother were raised in Turlock. I was born in a manu medical center. I went away to college, traveled the world. And when I decided to have children, I still decided to strategically come back to Turlock and grow my family here because I am Turlock. I even debated with my husband about buying our last house. We went back and forth between De Nayer and Modesto and I finally got my way. We're staying in Turlock. On Monday, that all changed for me and that decision. I was alerted by my neighborhood watch group that white supremacist signs were being put all over our neighborhood. So I decided to take a walk to investigate it and sure enough, one street over, on the next street over, on the next street over, on every single sign and every single public place were white supremacist stickers. Who has the stickers? If they could hold them up, could you face the audience the first one on the top? So the one that says equality is a false god? That's the one I took off my kid's preschool stop sign as I was dropping him off to school in the morning. Well, I think for any citizen, this would be rather alerting, right? Especially for a half African-American woman who is married to a white man in Turlock in a conservative community with multi-ethnic children. So what are these stickers? These stickers are alt-right stickers. I didn't know what it was. Yeah, I barely sleep most of the time and I'm trying to work and take care of three toddlers, so I'm not in on the hip lingo. So the alt-right is a white supremacist group. You might know them for their recent participation in Charlottesville. We always say, that's there, that's the South, that's the Midwest. But it's happening. It's happening here in Turlock. While the city was very sympathetic on the issue, they were slow to respond and sensed that they were understaffed. And my husband, please stand. A bunch of community members, please stand if you took down a sticker or saw a sticker, worked together tirelessly for hours to take the hundreds of stickers down that were plastered all over northeast Turlock. And the only thing that kept me going is I have four-year-old twins and they said, it was after late at night, and they said to me, mommy, daddy, where are you going? And we told them to fight the bad guys. So why am I here today? I'm here today for action. I'm here today to have Turlock fall in line with the cities and the state and the Senate who passed this morning a resolution to have a no-tolerance policy on hate and bigotry and white supremacy in our community. I'm here today in the resolution presented in front of you to ask you and ask for your support to pass this resolution, to say to the people of Turlock, to say to these white supremacists that we will not take this, not in our town, not in our city, not in Turlock. I'm asking today that the chief of police fully investigate with the detectives... I'm asking today that the chief of police fully investigate with the detectives the information that I have provided and hold these people accountable. Now, if they would have voted a KKK or a swastika on hundreds of public property, they would have been in jail already. We know who's doing it. We know who's doing it in our community. This is no less than gang affiliation or a dog peeing on a stop sign to mark their territory. And I say to the white supremacists here today, listening or at home, not in our town, not in our city, not for my children. Please pass the resolution today.
Thank you very much. Thank you very much, Ms. Reyes. Ann Strom.
I'm here to support the previous speaker. And if I could get my little thing to come up. So I want to just say that, a reminder that, you know, A, this city is very diverse. Even the K through 12 schools here are quite diverse. In fact, I was just looked up the numbers, and about 67% of our students are students of color. And it is something that I would also like to see in future Turlock Police Department presentations on first day of school safety because I saw a lot of white children, which I'm white, I like white kids too. But I'd kind of like to see a little more of people represented, and that's kind of part of the problem. I work at a university that's majority-minority, and I'm here to say that, yes, white supremacist ideology is anyone's right to believe, but it doesn't mean that the city has to support that ideology. So I'm calling on the city to do the following. One, expend a little more energy finding, removing, and figuring out who's placing so-called alt-right, i.e. white supremacist stickers on city property, and put forward a resolution that is declaring this city, finding white supremacist ideology to be unacceptable, disgusting, and a resolution that states its unequivocal belief in the rights of people of color, LGBTQ-plus people, religious minorities, immigrants of all statuses, and any other marginalized group, that those people, all of us, have the same rights as all other community members to live their lives free of fear and harassment that is based upon white supremacist ideology. Thank you.
I'd like to call on Carla Sewright.
Hello. Just to piggyback on what they've been talking about, I'd like to read the resolution that you all have in front of you. Resolution, not in our community, whereas bullying, harassment, and hate crimes have increased in cities and communities across America, whereas the County of Stanislaus and City of Turlock welcomes and values diverse racial, ethnic, religious, and national backgrounds, and further recognizes that our diversity is critical to the economic, cultural, and social well-being of our community. Whereas history has tragically taught us what happens when people stand silently by and allow acts of intolerance, hatred, and violence to occur. Whereas people often feel isolated, without hope, and helpless to do anything individually to end hate crime. Whereas people in communities across our nation have stood up and successfully opposed any acts of discrimination committed against their neighbors. Therefore, be it resolved that the City of Turlock and its elected representatives stand up against bigotry, hatred-based groups, hate-based crimes of all kinds within our organization and throughout the community, and declares that no one shall be discriminated against because of race, faith, ethnicity, national origin, legal status, gender, age, disability, sexual orientation, or any other real or perceived difference and that. We also resolve to stand together with all people of good faith across the nation in an effort to push back the rising tide of bullying, harassment, racism, and hate crimes to proclaim, not in our city, not in our country, not in our community, not in Turlock.
Thank you very much, Carla. Might there be other individuals desiring to contribute to the discussion this evening? Ah, yes, come forward to the microphone and please state your name for us.
Good evening. My name is Denise Hunt, and I've lived here for a little over 40 years now. Came from the Bay Area. When I came, it was a town of about 26,000 people. It's a little bit bigger these days. I love living in Turlock. I love how Turlock feels safe to me. I enjoy the diversity of living here in the Central Valley and in Turlock as well. You know, I enjoyed the presentation about the first day of school and the lengths that the city and the police department and the schools go to to keep our kids safe. One of the biggest problems for me with this activity that's been occurring in our community is that it creates an atmosphere of fear and intimidation, and I will not stand for that. That's not okay. It's not what Turlock should be about. And in fact, when we see that happening, I would hope that our city and our community will rise up against that and say, no, that's not going to happen here. Thank you.
You've got all the ladies in the white shirts. I'm Donna Anfley. I've lived here for, gosh, I don't know, I'm not a native, but I've been here a long time, taught school here for 25 years and stuff. I want to make it very clear that the alt, who the alt-right really are, that's really a nice name. They're Nazis. They're not the people that we value. My dad fought in the war, World War II, against Nazis. We thought a long time ago that that problem had been solved, but lately, it's really been festering underground. And now, it's out in the open. It's okay to carry a torch, march down a street yelling, blood and soil, the Nazi yell. It's okay to take a car and run over a woman because she doesn't agree with you. I never thought this would happen in my town. We need to do something as a community. We cannot let this duster like pus coming out of our town. We're better than the town up the road a little bit who said, oh, we don't want to look like Turlock. They've got those alt-right people down there. We're going to pass legislation that doesn't allow that to happen. Okay? We've got to be better than that. We've got to stand up, be strong. You're going to take some criticism, but in the end, you know it's the correct thing to do. Please, pass the resolution. Thank you.
And once again, just remember, we're limited to five minutes on our comments. Please state your name for the record.
My name is Ivan Clay, and I've been a resident of Turlock for many years. I went to school here. I would have been here sooner if you'd, I want you to synchronize those lights on Gil Road. Danielle, who spoke first, and her mother and father, we were students together at Stanislaus in the early 80s. And I will tell this body that as a student at Stanislaus in the 70s, in the 80s, it was more of a comfortable feeling than it is in 2017. We all got stories we could tell. I've been in Turlock for 40-plus years, living in this valley my entire life. I can tell you the concerns are real, and as been stated earlier, something needs to be done. And I would hope something more than just a conversation. And it, not here to tell war stories, but I'm here to let you know the concern that's been voiced is real. And it would be nice if something could be done. And, you know, it'd take this to bring me out to the City Council, having been here for as long as I've been here. But I will tell you, the concerns are real, and I look forward to the response from the committee.
Hello. My name is Laura Machado. I'm a teaching credential student at C.S.C. Stanislaus currently. Some of you might remember the news article that came out on multiple channels and newspapers about some protesters interrupting President Jun's speech. I was one of them. Because we want to draw attention to the rise of white supremacism on our campus as well as in our community. We all know of a certain white supremacist who is the leader of a white supremacist org called Identity Europa. Actually, he stepped down, but he's still in our community, and he still has an influence. We want to address the city to raise the issue that we cannot stand aside while white supremacists continue to gain influence within our communities. It's addressing racial tensions that have remained in our communities historically from the founding of our country, and we need to take a stance. We need to be better than our history. We need to rise up. We can't be blind to race. We can't be blind to hate. We need to take a stance and say, your freedom of speech doesn't outweigh the freedom of people to survive, to exist as people of color, as people who are marginalized on the basis of their sexuality, of their gender, of anything, but especially of race because that has been our country's cardinal sin. We have to step up. Every white person in our community needs to stand up and push the white supremacists away from us, and the city needs to take a strong stance against white supremacism because standing aside, standing neutral, only reinforces their power. White supremacism has been a part of this country from the very beginning, and by not choosing to stand against it, you reinforce it. Neutrality isn't neutral. It's reinforcing the power that already exists. We need to take a stance, and I'm holding you accountable, okay? I'm here on behalf of my loved ones, my friends, my community members, and you need to remember that they are here too. Whether they're, whatever their race, whatever their immigration status, they are members of our community, and they deserve protection even more for all the ways they are marginalized. We need to be better, and I'm holding everyone here accountable for that.
Might there be other commenters or other viewpoints that would like to be expressed? Yes, sir. Right back here, sir. Go right ahead.
My name is Francisco Reyes, and I'd just like to point out something. This is a, some people say that history repeats itself. I said it doesn't. In the 1930s and the 20s, when the Hitler came to power, the Ku Klux Klan ran in the United States freely. People were real docile. They didn't fight back. This is a different times. And I think this thing has to stop, and don't do it because of the color of my skin. Some years ago, without, wanted to, I find myself in the middle of the Norteño gangs. I may tell you, this is scary people. You don't want those two extreme groups to collide because these people don't think, these other people don't think. And in the 30s, you were white, you don't associate with somebody with color. That was okay. You were out of trouble. Not at this time. My kids, your kids, your grandkids, any color. If we leave this, we let this thing go, we hope we don't, for everybody's sake. And that's what I'm, that's what I'm here to make this point. This is my fear because I know this group. I know that those, right now, Sureños and Norteños, they're killing each other for a color. They're war. Man, don't let them start killing for the color of the skin. And these are youths that, it will be tragic in either way. You have, I mean, I have my neighbors, now they're running around my street with these big flags. The flag should be a pride. It belongs to us. It should not be used as a tool of intimidation. And I'm old, I don't pay attention to them, but don't let those youngsters get into that because us, we don't want to be there.
Council members, thank you. My name is Anthony Castillo. I'm a lifelong resident of Turlock. Born here, graduated Turlock High in '99, graduated from Stanislaus in 2010. I just want to say that it has been very disturbing to see the rise of this right here in our community. Just like what Laura said earlier, this is something that isn't foreign and across the country like in Charlottesville. This is happening right here. This is Mr. Nathan Domingo, who is a student over at Stanislaus, who is on par with Richard Spencer, trying to get people to commit violence and recruit people using the places that we've created to educate and protect our kids. It's something that we have to take a stand for, and we have to let people know that we're beyond that. And there's no equivalent of sides here. As soon as we have people in black masks showing up over here, we can pass a resolution on that, right? But right now, we have an immediate threat. The immediate threat is people who are trying to seduce confused and lost young men, and sell them the false promise of white nationalism and twist them into becoming violent people like Francisco said. They're no different than gang members. Let's treat them like gang members.
Might there be other speakers or perhaps speakers on another issue? Okay, seeing none. I'd like to take, just make this following comment. We will be taking these comments under advisement. We're taking them very seriously. It's not something we casually accept on a Tuesday evening. City manager, I'd like for us to take a look at this resolution. I'd like for the police chief, for fire, for fellow council, as well, our meetings, our get-togethers with both district and university. I believe that there may be an item of substance here that we need to approach and to achieve some sort of resolution on. So let's be doing that, and I think with Mayor's concurrence, we'll see if we can't do that within the next couple of weeks. But I'd like to get that.
Thanks.
Yes, go ahead, Mayor.
Absolutely. I agree with you. Listening to Donna and Laura and everyone else's comments, I agree, Turlock is better than this, and I look forward to sitting down with them, with you, and looking at this resolution, seeing what we can bring back, make good statements about how Turlock does stand against bigotry and discrimination and everything that they've been talking about. So thank you so much for bringing that forward, and I look forward to having this conversation.
This conversation will in fact take place, folks. This is not something that we can act on this evening. We very much can receive the comment, receive the input. It's an item that is of concern to us when it has to do with illegal behavior, and we will be pursuing resolution on this issue. Thank you very much. Okay. Any other public participation? If not, we're going to proceed then.
synopsis on the program, the agreement with the, uh, Secret Service. When I saw Secret Service in there, I'm going like, "What's going on?" It made me nervous. So, I just wanted him to give me a little, little bit of information on it, and, uh, so he's got a brief statement for us, just, just to let us know what's happening.
Chief?
Thank you, Vice Mayor, council member, and mayor. Uh, the item before you is requesting a motion to approve an agreement between the city of Turlock and the United States Secret Service, allowing staff to utilize equipment issued by the United States Secret Service, and authorizing the city manager to sign an agreement. Uh, what this is, is the Secret Service is part of our cybersecurity for the United States, along with the FBI and numerous other agencies. Uh, without getting into some critical information in regards to equipment and training, the Secret Service offered training, um, for the multiple agencies in the city of Turlock, uh, utilized that opportunity free of charge to send our high-tech detective, which council approved us to have last year, thank you, to this training. Uh, with that, uh, the Secret Service has provided us thirty-
Can you hold just one moment, chief?
Thanks, Allison. Go ahead, chief. Sorry. So, the training was with the National Computer Forensics Institute training, and it, uh, it involves some very extensive forensics-type training for computers, along with other electronic devices. The Secret Service has provided, uh, Turlock Police Department, with thirty thousand dollars worth of equipment. That equipment is hardware and software that are intrinsic to the, uh, the manner in which we conduct forensic results and tests on the, uh, computers, tablets, et cetera, et cetera. I can't get into the type of equipment it is, and I can't get into the software that's available. I can tell you that the city of Turlock cannot afford to buy it, so it was given us, to us free of charge upon attending this, and I can tell you that the Secret Service, uh, was holding it at the airport, uh, upon a request from me to please let us utilize it until we can bring this forth to council. Uh, they did so, and, and it has already been instrumental in several child pornography cases you may have seen on Facebook in regards to individuals that were arrested for child porn, along with several other cases we currently have pending, including homicide solutions. So, it is extremely important to our high-tech detectives, and, uh, it's free of charge, so. It is not, it is not a type of, uh, communique that you may have heard. It doesn't monitor anybody's cellphone or anything like that. It's actually items that we have in hand through either arrests or search warrants that allows us to gain access and, uh, follow that equipment.
Okay. Any additional questions? How about public question or comment? Seeing none. I'll bring it back to the council for consideration. Moved by council member Esquer, seconded by council member Booblaq. Uh, clerk, please read back and call the roll.
Approving an agreement between the city of Turlock and the United States Secret Service, allowing staff to utilize equipment issued by USSS, and authorizing the city manager to sign the agreement. Council member Esquer.
Yes.
Council member DeHart.
Yes.
Council member Booblaq.
Yes.
Mayor Soyseth.
Yes.
And that motion carries. Thank you very much, council. Um, five L has been green-sheeted. I think there are copies in the back for us. I'm going to call on, uh, Mr. Cook.
Good evening, Vice Mayor, mayor, members of the city council. This is a, uh, an agreement between the city of Turlock and Townsend Public Affairs for legislative advocacy services, grant-writing services. We've had an agreement with them since twenty-thirteen. Um, however, given the, uh, city's financial situation and the ongoing negotiations with employee groups, it may be prudent to adjust the initial term of this contract, uh, just make it a shorter term initially through the end of this calendar year, at which point you'll have better clarification of the fiscal implications of the contract, where you are with employee negotiations. And at that point, if you choose to do so, there's the option, the amended agreement in your green sheet there, to do two further one-year extensions with Townsend, should you choose to do so. So, uh, just basically, given the situation we're in, it may be a chance to take a little pause right here and look at a number of these professional services contracts. So, I'd be happy to answer any questions on that.
Questions? Um, I do have a couple. Uh, number one, is it, uh, is, is extending the contract through the end of this calendar year the only option that's acceptable? What about a month-to-month until such time as we resolve the labor negotiations? I mean, if we, if we conclude those and find that we don't have, uh, I'd also hate to see those negotiations hampered by, albeit five thousand a month, however. You get my point?
Right. It's basically, it's basically written as a month-to-month contract, but subject to availability of funds. Uh, my own recommendation is, uh, somewhat selfishly, uh, Townsend's helping us right now with the funding for the North Valley Program, and we're very close to getting our funding agreement with the state for low-interest financing, and so I think it's prudent if we keep them in, in play right now to help us with that project. And again, that is funded out of enterprise funds, so, um, I think it's worth the investment to keep them on board, at least for that initial period.
Okay. Public comment, questions? Bringing it back to council, what is the will?
I agree with, uh, Mr. Cook's assessment, and I think that there's no bearing on Townsend's performance, uh, but I think that we should approve a contract just to the end of the, uh, calendar year, so I'd like to make that motion.
Okay. Okay, it's been moved by the mayor in absentia, and seconded by council member Booblaq. Uh, can you read that amended, uh, motion, please?
Yes. Approving an agreement between the city of Turlock and Townsend Public Affairs for lobbying services with an amended term from September twelfth, twenty-seventeen, through December thirty-first, twenty-seventeen, with two possible twelve-month extensions, ending December thirty-first, twenty-eighteen, and December thirty-first, twenty-nineteen, respectively, and an amended compensation amount of five thousand per calendar month, and an annual amount not to exceed sixty thousand dollars.
That is correct. Go ahead. Thank you.
Council member Esquer.
Yes.
Council member DeHart.
Yes.
Council member Booblaq.
Yes.
Mayor Soyseth.
Yes.
And that motion carries. Thank you very much, council. Um, five L has been green-sheeted. I think there are copies in the back for us. I'm going to call on, uh, Mr. Cook.
Good evening, Vice Mayor, mayor, members of the city council. This is a, uh, an agreement between the city of Turlock and Townsend Public Affairs for legislative advocacy services, grant-writing services. We've had an agreement with them since twenty-thirteen. Um, however, given the, uh, city's financial situation and the ongoing negotiations with employee groups, it may be prudent to adjust the initial term of this contract, uh, just make it a shorter term initially through the end of this calendar year, at which point you'll have better clarification of the fiscal implications of the contract, where you are with employee negotiations. And at that point, if you choose to do so, there's the option, the amended agreement in your green sheet there, to do two, uh, further one-year extensions with Townsend, should you choose to do so. So, uh, just basically, given the situation we're in, it may be a chance to take a little pause right here and look at a number of these professional services contracts. So, I'd be happy to answer any questions on that.
Questions? Um, I do have a couple. Uh, number one, is it, uh, is, is extending the contract through the end of this calendar year the only option that's acceptable? What about a month-to-month until such time as we resolve the labor negotiations? I mean, if we, if we conclude those and find that we don't have, uh, I'd also hate to see those negotiations hampered by, albeit five thousand a month, however. You get my point?
Right. It's basically, it's basically written as a month-to-month contract, but subject to availability of funds. Uh, my own recommendation is, uh, somewhat selfishly, uh, Townsend's helping us right now with the funding for the North Valley Program, and we're very close to getting our funding agreement with the state for low-interest financing, and so I think it's prudent if we keep them in, in play right now to help us with that project. And again, that is funded out of enterprise funds, so, um, I think it's worth the investment to keep them on board, at least for that initial period.
Okay. Public comment, questions? Bringing it back to council, what is the will?
I agree with, uh, Mr. Cook's assessment, and I think that there's no bearing on Townsend's performance, uh, but I think that we should approve a contract just to the end of the, uh, calendar year, so I'd like to make that motion.
Okay. Okay, it's been moved by the mayor in absentia, and seconded by council member Booblaq. Uh, can you read that amended, uh, motion, please?
Yes. Approving an agreement between the city of Turlock and Townsend Public Affairs for lobbying services with an amended term from September twelfth, twenty-seventeen, through December thirty-first, twenty-seventeen, with two possible twelve-month extensions, ending December thirty-first, twenty-eighteen, and December thirty-first, twenty-nineteen, respectively, and an amended compensation amount of five thousand per calendar month, and an annual amount not to exceed sixty thousand dollars.
That is correct. Go ahead. Thank you.
Council member Esquer.
Yes.
Council member DeHart.
Yes.
Council member Booblaq.
Yes.
Mayor Soyseth.
Yes.
And that motion carries. Thank you very much, council. Uh, okay, I do believe that concludes our, uh, consent. I'm sorry? And that's been, uh, I guess we do have to move to schedule it? Is that what we have to do?
No, I just was pulling it up. Left somebody else-
I, I did. I pulled it, and I have, uh, rescheduled it for the twenty-sixth.
Oh.
Additional staff work required.
Mr. Bardi know? Who's sitting here?
Pardon?
The, the chamber representative was here the whole day for it.
I, I don't know. I don't know.
I, I agree with the Vice Mayor moving into the next ma, uh, the next meeting when the full council's here to consider it.
Okay. Do we need a motion, uh, to reschedule it at this point, a manager or clerk? Do you know at this point? I don't believe we do. We'll just be, uh, we do have Mr. Wolf online, don't we? Lincoln.
Yeah, hi. Um, I would recommend that if you're going to reschedule it to a date certain, that you, uh, do so by motion. If you're going to pull it off indefinitely and, and reschedule it another time, then no motion is necessary.
Uh, very well. Time is of the essence. I appreciate the, uh, input. Time is of the essence, however, uh, I'd like the benefit of a full council hearing on this particular item. Uh, the chair will entertain a motion to reschedule for September twenty-sixth.
So, moved.
Okay.
Okay, it's been moved by council member Esquer, seconded by the mayor, to reschedule item J for the September twenty-sixth meeting. Uh, clerk, can you call the roll on that, please?
Council member Esquer.
Yes.
Council member DeHart.
Yes.
Council member Booblaq.
Yes.
Mayor Soyseth.
Yes.
Okay, that motion, uh, carries. Moving on to public hearings this evening. Um, as a matter of fact, before we do that, I'm gonna, I, I'd like to take something out of order. I think I can do that, because I'm presiding. I hope. What do you think, mayor? Can I get away with that?
Absolutely.
Awesome. Awesome, because I'm in town. Um, I'd like to move us to scheduled matters, if I could. Uh, item A, excuse me, incorrect. I want one page too short. Um, it is under scheduled matters, however, I'd like to direct our attention to item D, and that is a request to adopt the city of Turlock Active Military Banner Program and designate countryside drive between Fullcurth Road and Monavista Avenue as the inaugural installation corridor, and I'd like to call upon, wow, radar, Ms. Van Gilder, to, uh, make the presentation this evening.
Thank you very much, Vice Mayor, mayor, and council. It is truly my honor and privilege to present this, um, item to you tonight. Um, this particular project comes, um, as a result of work that our Veterans Committee has put together, as well as, um, a very, um, passionate and dedicated member of our community and former employee who essentially, uh, brought this idea forward, uh, to, to us for consideration, and we are so thankful that, that she did, because we believe that through that idea and all of the hard work of our committee and staff, um, we've put together a pretty special program, uh, to recognize our active military members. And so, uh, what this particular, um, program will do is it will recognize, um, active military members from our community, um, and it, they will be recognized along countryside between Fullcurth Road and Monavista, essentially our inaugural corridor for the program. And banners, uh, with their picture and their area of, of service will be, um, displayed along the light poles on that corridor, and our intent is that they will hang for a period of one year wherein that after that period is over, they will be, um, retired through a, a ceremony. Um, and then we hope that the following year we'll have a whole new batch of, of recognition to, to display. And so, um, tonight, I, I would like to ask, um, Ms. Trish Panos to come up, please, since she was the, um, individual who brought this idea forward. I know that, um, she has a few words that she would like to share with you.
Hi, Trish.
Good evening. I am a military mom. September eighteenth, nineteen ninety-seven is a day I will never forget as a parent, driving my son Jason to, who is a recent Turlock High School graduate, to the Navy Recruiting Office in Modesto, so he could forget, begin his naval career. As a parent, I can't express to you how proud I was of my son's decision, or how much I wanted to hold my little boy forever. Of course, I had to make sure nobody in the recruiting office was watching, because he was a little embarrassed. As any parent or family member will tell you, those are mixed emotions then go with the decision for anybody who joins the military. First and foremost, they will tell you how proud they are. The Active Banner Program is a reminder to those families and active military members that Turlock, our community, is proud, not only with the community's support of them, but it will support their families here at home. With the Thousand Flags Initiative and now the Active Military Banner Program, all who visit our community will see how proud we are of those who have chosen to serve before, now, and in the future. As I drive around Turlock, I tear up seeing so many flags displayed, so many proud Americans that we have living in our community. I'm very proud to be an American. I'm very proud to be a part of this community as well. On a personal note, Monday will mark my son's twentieth anniversary for the, his service in the Navy, and October first, he will officially retire. As a parent, I'm not sure I could be any prouder ever of him. I am, however, hoping I get to hold him for a long time and don't care who sees. Mr. Mayor, I want to thank you for listening to my proposal that day. Sergeant Russ Holman is the one who actually told me about this program down south, and I kind of ran with what he had shared with me, so thank you, Russ. Thank you, all of you, for your time, for your supporting the Active Military Banner, and thank you from your staff for putting it all together. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Thanks, Trish.
So, council, tonight, we're asking you to consider adopting the Active Military Banner Program, and if I could get some assistance from Amber, AKA Vanna, we'd like to display to you, uh, what the banners will look like. So, they're eight, they're eight feet in length, and, um, believe it or not, this is the same length as the banners along Monavista near the university, so they don't look as big, I think, as we're driving by, but, um, we, we modeled it after what they have there in terms of the size. So, we're very pleased with the, um, the way that they, uh, came out in, in terms of production. Um, we feel that it's a, a fitting tribute to, um, the active military members in our community. This happens to be one of our own active military members, and I know their family is here tonight, so thank you very much for allowing us to, um, to use her image to, to kick it off. It's, it meant a lot to have someone local to be able to unveil this with, so. Um, so, council, this item's before you for consideration, and there's a related item right after this one that I would also, um, be happy to present when you're ready.
Are there any questions? Any question? Any comments?
How proud of the Marines.
What do you think? Mom, dad? Well, without further ado, I'll bring it back to council for consideration.
Mayor? Can you interest?
Yeah, I definitely, it, it's a great program, and I'm just so excited to see it come to fruition. Um, at, before, I'd like the motion, I'd like to hear from David Tina. Put him on the pot.
Gina can't talk. She's gonna cry.
Gina's gonna talk, sure.
Come on, pass her name.
Well, I think we can echo you. We're not twenty years into the process, but-
But thank you for your service, because it does take a family supporting them.
It does, and we are, first time with this-
We're learning.
-so we're learning as we go.
Yeah.
But we are incredibly proud of our daughter and her service, and all who've served alongside her, and to know that our city stands with us and, um, supports our military and those who serve to protect, it just means the world to us. So, thank you.
Thank you for the honor.
Thank you. Thank you for the honor. Thank you for the honor. So, mayor, did I hear a motion coming our way?
I absolutely will. Motion is the Marine on the diet will second it.
I'd be delighted to second that motion. Absolutely delighted. Okay, request... Go ahead, read the motion if you would. Clerk can call the roll.
Adopting the City of Turlock Active Military Banner Program and Designating Countryside Drive Between Folkerth Road and Mona Vista Avenue as the inaugural installation corridor as introduced. Councilmember Esker?
Yes.
Councilmember DeHart?
Yes.
Councilmember Booblaack?
Yes.
Mayor Soyseth?
Yes.
And if we could... That's great. The motion carries. If we could introduce that companion issue at this point, Ms. Van Gilder?
Mayor, council, it's also my honor... I'm a little emotional. Sorry, I don't know where that came from. It's amazing when partnerships can come together, and we have a tremendous partner in our Farmers' Market, and they are asking council to consider their $5,000 annual payment to be used to kick off the inaugural year of our Active Military Banner Program, and are asking council to consider designating the $5,000 to essentially pay for the banners so that our active military families don't have to come up with that cost, at least for the inaugural year. And we're hoping that it will inspire other organizations to come forward as well to make similar donations so that essentially no active family member or, excuse me, any active member or their family has to essentially pay out of pocket for this privilege. So, with that, I would answer any questions. And I'm sorry. Valeria Jimenez is here tonight representing Golden State Farmers' Market and the Central Park Evening Market, and I know she also wanted to add a few words.
Hello, everyone. Mayor Soyseth, councils of the members. Members of the council. I'm choking up. I just keep on choking up over this. When we first learned about this project, it was unanimous and immediate. Our response on just... We had to be a part of this. And when I think about the Farmers' Market, I think about all our local farmers, our local producers, our local growers and artisans, and we all have the same common thread that is...
Hmm. It's okay.
It's to pursue the American dream. And that's a dream that would not be possible if it weren't for those who are actively serving our country, fighting for our safety daily, and protecting our freedom. So, it's because of those heroes that we are who we are, because of those heroes that we can chase after our own dreams. And this is a drop in the bucket when it comes to our gratitude, the gratitude we should be expressing to others. But it's a small role, and we're so grateful, humbled, and honored to be a part of it. And on behalf of the Central Park Market, we are excited to see what else comes from it. So, thank you.
And thank you, Allison, for bringing this up to us.
So, are there other comments or questions at this point? Okay, what is the will of the council?
It's just a resolution.
Second. Okay. Moved and seconded. Clerk, could you please read that resolution and call the roll?
Appropriating $5,000 to account number 269606144144401000 supplies funded by the donation received from Golden State Farmers' Market Association to be used for the City of Turlock Active Military Banner Program. Councilmember Esker?
Yes.
Councilmember DeHart?
Yes.
Councilmember Booblaack?
Yes.
Mayor Soyseth?
Yes.
That motion carries. And before we leave, mayor, you're gonna have to do this in absentia. I'm sorry, sir. I'd like to have a censor the first banner in the middle of the room, and I think there's Sergeant Holman back there, certainly the Larson's, the council, those folks that should be in the picture. Why don't you come on up, and let's surround this banner, get a good picture. There's gotta be somebody out here, Eric, that could take that picture for us.
You're killing me, that mayor.
You know, mayor, we'll hold a silhouette for you.
Come on, Trish.
Hey, why don't you guys straddle it? One on one and one on the other. Yeah, 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 yeah. So that's here and here. Media a little tighter. 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 There we go. Turn it up. Take several. Okay, so. I'm gonna take a picture. I don't know. Something you might have. I want to see a lot of people.
No. We've still got considerable business to do, but that investment in that particular program is well worth our effort and attention. So, thank you very much for that. We're gonna return back to 8A.
Seven.
Like I said, 7A. Request to supersede and replace Resolution Number 2016-108 and adopt an updated cost-recovery percentage and schedule of fees and charges for city services. And guess who? Go right ahead.
The item before you tonight is to supersede and replace Resolution 2016-108 and adopt updated cost-recovery percentages and the schedule of fees and charges for city services to include city recreational services. You first saw this item on August 8, 2017, where it was adopted, and at the conclusion of the meeting, staff determined that a potential procedural error may have existed relative to public noticing requirements. So, at that time, staff established a refund process for customers that were affected and impacted by the change in fees. And since then, staff has renoticed a public hearing item pursuant to the applicable laws, and is requesting council tonight consideration of this item. Upon approval by the city council, the updated fees and charges will then become effective. And there's a schedule with your staff report tonight, if you have any questions.
Thanks, Julie. Are there questions before us? Pretty self-explanatory. Any comments from the public on this? And bringing it back to council, what is the will of the council?
Introduce the resolution.
Okay. It's been moved by Councilmember Booblaack, seconded by the mayor. Clerk, could you please read back and call the roll?
Superseding and replacing Resolution Number 2016-108 and adopting updated cost-recovery percentages and the schedule of fees and charges for city services to include city recreational services pursuant to Turlock Municipal Code Section 3-3-301-F6. Councilmember Esker?
Yes.
Councilmember DeHart?
Yes.
Councilmember Booblaack?
Yes.
Mayor Soyseth?
Yes.
And that motion carries. Thank you very much, council. Now, items 7B through 7I are multiple issues involving the same basic subjects. So, we're basically, you want to be handling them concurrently, but we will be conducting a separate vote on each. So, Mike, basically, what we're gonna talk about is a request to order the improvements in formation of Potter's Landing, Hillmark Cheese, Taco Bell, Dust Bowl, Valley Milk, Blue Diamond, Turlock Walnut, and Folkerth Chevron. Could you go ahead and make your presentation, please?
Thank you, sir. The item before you is the formation of the Landscape and Lighting Districts and the Benefit Assessment Districts for the following areas. Item 7B, as you stated, was Potter's Landing, which is eight-lot subdivision on Hawkeite, just east of Gear Road. 7C is Hillmark Cheese, which is a processes milk products, and this is at 3,600 Canal Drive. 7D is Taco Bell, located at Robertson Golden State Boulevard. 7E is Dust Bowl Brewery, located at Folkerth and Diane. 7F was Valley Milk, which processes milk products at 400 North Washington Road. 7G was Blue Diamond, which processes almonds at 1300 Washington Road. 7H is Turlock Walnut Company, which processes walnuts at Third and D Street. 7I is Folkerth Chevron, located at Folkerth and Diane Drive. The Landscape and Lighting Act of 1972 and the Benefit Assessment Act of 1982 allowed for the formation of assessment districts and benefit assessment areas. The purpose of these assessments and benefit assessment areas is to ensure development pays for its own maintenance and operation of the streetlights. It also pays for the maintenance of public landscaping, and as well as street sweeping, and future slurry seals along its frontage. At this time, I'd be happy to answer any questions on any of those.
Can you answer a question for me, Mike, on Folkerth Chevron?
Yes.
At Diane and Folkerth?
Yeah, it's not there yet.
Okay, good.
Generally, these are always done prior to the opening of the businesses, but we were going through a process of retooling all of our resolutions and getting it up to the latest regulatory wording and so forth. So, some of these fell back, and they started business and everything else. Now, we're bringing them into the system. Once we got all that dealt with. So, now you're seeing this catch-up. Traditionally, that is always done prior to, or just as they go into construction.
Because of the way we've been handling this particular series of items this evening, I just want to make real certain that we address the fact that there is nothing materially different other than name of business and address.
That is correct.
One to the next.
That's correct.
There's no separate deal cut with any of these other folks, or...
It's purely a equation. We put in the linear footage of curb and gutter, the square footage of road, we put in the linear footage of landscaping and the number of streetlights. Goes into a formula, and that formula kicks out the cost. And so, there is no difference as far as how it's calculated. There is a difference in the fee based on where the property is and what the parameters are.
Okay, thank you. Other questions? Comments? Public comment or questions? Seeing none, bringing it back to the council. We'll start off with item B. Okay? Any... We have to... We still have to move it, though, right?
Yes.
We still have to... So, are you advancing the resolution? Okay, good. Do we have a second on that? Second, okay. It's been... The resolution's been moved by Councilmember Esker, seconded by Councilmember Booblaack. Clerk, could you please read the resolution and call the roll?
Ordering the improvements in formation of Potter's Landing Subdivision Development Project Number 1457, Landscaping and Lighting Benefit Assessment District in the Street Maintenance Benefit Assessment Area, and confirming the diagram and benefit assessments as set forth in the annual report of the engineer of work and the levying and collection of assessments set forth therein for fiscal year 2017-2018 for the Potter's Landing Subdivision Development Project Number 1457, Landscaping and Lighting Benefit Assessment District and the Street Maintenance Benefit Assessment Area pursuant to Resolution Number 97-128. Councilmember Esker?
Yes.
Councilmember DeHart?
Yes.
Councilmember Booblaack?
Yes.
Mayor Soyseth?
Yes.
That resolution carries. On the item number C regarding Hillmark Cheese, I'd like to advance that resolution.
Second.
So, I went ahead and advanced it. Councilmember Esker has seconded it. Clerk, could you read that resolution and call the roll, please?
Ordering the improvements in formation of the Hillmark Cheese Development Project Number 1533, Landscaping and Lighting Benefit Assessment District in the Street Maintenance Benefit Assessment Area, and confirming the diagram and benefit assessments as set forth in the annual report of the engineer of work and the levying and collection of assessments set forth therein for fiscal year 2017-2018 for the Hillmark Cheese Development Project Number 1533, Landscaping and Lighting Benefit Assessment District and the Street Maintenance Benefit Assessment Area pursuant to Resolution Number 97-128. Councilmember Esker?
Yes.
Councilmember DeHart?
Yes.
Councilmember Booblaack?
Yes.
Mayor Soyseth?
Yes.
Thank you, council. That motion... Or that resolution carries. And now come item D for the Taco Bell. What is the will of the council?
Move to advance.
Councilmember Esker advances. Councilmember Booblaack seconds. Clerk, could you please read the resolution and call the roll?
Ordering the improvements in formation of the Taco Bell Development Project Number 1534, Landscaping and Lighting Benefit Assessment District and the Street Maintenance Benefit Assessment Area, and confirming the diagram and benefit assessments as set forth in the annual report of the engineer of work and the levying and collection of assessments set forth therein for fiscal year 2017-2018 for the Taco Bell Development Project Number 1534, Landscaping and Lighting Benefit Assessment District in the Street Maintenance Benefit Assessment Area pursuant to Resolution Number 97-128. Councilmember Esker?
Yes.
Councilmember DeHart?
Yes.
Councilmember Booblaack?
Yes.
Mayor Soyseth?
Yes.
And that resolution carries. Item number D pertaining to Dust Bowl Brewery. Could you please read that resolution and also call the roll?
Move to advance. You want a motion? Move it.
Like I said, how about a motion? Okay, how about we did that? Councilmember Esker has advanced the resolution. Councilmember Booblaack has seconded. Now...
Ordering the improvements in formation of the Dust Bowl Brewery Development Project Number 1535, Landscaping and Lighting Benefit Assessment District and the Street Maintenance Benefit Assessment Area, and confirming the diagram and benefit assessments as set forth in the annual report of the engineer of work and the levying and collection of assessments set forth therein for fiscal year 2017-2018 for the Dust Bowl Brewery Development Project Number 1535, Landscaping and Lighting Benefit Assessment District and the Street Maintenance Benefit Assessment Area pursuant to Resolution Number 97-128. Councilmember Esker?
Yes.
Councilmember DeHart?
Yes.
Councilmember Booblaack?
Yes.
Mayor Soyseth?
Yes.
And that resolution carries. Item F pertaining to Valley Milk, what is the will?
Move to advance.
Second. Councilmember Esker has advanced the resolution. Councilmember Booblaack has seconded. Clerk, could you please read and call the roll?
Ordering the improvements in formation of the Valley Milk Development Project Number 1737, Landscaping and Lighting Benefit Assessment District and the Street Maintenance Benefit Assessment Area, and confirming the diagram and benefit assessments as set forth in the annual report of the engineer of work and the levying and collection of assessments set forth therein for fiscal year 2017-18 for the Valley Milk Development Project Number 1737, Landscaping and Lighting Benefit Assessment District and the Street Maintenance Benefit Assessment Area pursuant to Resolution Number 97-128. Councilmember Esker?
Yes.
Councilmember DeHart?
Yes.
Councilmember Booblaack?
Yes.
Mayor Soyseth?
Yes.
And that resolution passes. Item G pertaining to Blue Diamond.
Move to advance. Second.
It's been moved and seconded, moved by Councilmember Esker, seconded by Councilmember Booblaack. Clerk, please read the resolution and call the roll.
Ordering the improvements in formation of the Blue Diamond Development Project Number 1738, Landscaping and Lighting Benefit Assessment District and the Street Maintenance Benefit Assessment Area, and confirming the diagram and benefit assessments as set forth in the annual report of the engineer of work and the levying and collection of assessments set forth therein for fiscal year 2017-2018 for the Blue Diamond Development Project Number 1738, Landscaping and Lighting Benefit Assessment District and the Street Maintenance Benefit Assessment Area pursuant to Resolution Number 97-128. Councilmember Esker?
Yes.
Councilmember DeHart?
Yes.
Councilmember Booblaack?
Yes.
Mayor Soyseth?
And that carries, with three voting in the affirmative, one abstention, and one absent. Item number H... Pardon me? Okay, good. Item number H pertaining to Turlock Walnut, what is the will of the council?
Move to advance.
Councilmember Esker has moved to advance. Councilmember Booblaack has seconded. Clerk, please read the resolution and conduct the roll.
Ordering the improvements in information of the Turlock Walnut Company Development Project Number 1739, Landscaping and Lighting Benefit Assessment District and Street Maintenance Benefit Assessment Area, and confirming the diagram and benefit assessments as set forth in the annual report of the engineer of work and the levying and collection of assessments set forth therein for fiscal year 2017-2018 set forth therein for fiscal year 2017-2018 for the Turlock Walnut Company Development Project Number 1739, landscaping and lighting benefit assessment district and the street maintenance benefit assessment area pursuant to Resolution Number 97-128. Councilmember Esquer?
Yes.
Councilmember DeHart?
Yes.
Councilmember Booblaack?
Yes.
Mayor Soyseth?
Yes.
Come item I pertaining to Folkerth Chevron, that's not there yet. What is the will?
Advance.
Okay. Councilmember Booblaack has seconded the motion advanced by councilmember Esquer. Had to change it up there, folks. Please read the resolution, clerk, and call the roll.
Ordering the improvements in formation of the Folkerth Chevron Development Project Number 1740, landscaping and lighting benefit assessment district and the street maintenance benefit assessment area and confirming the diagram and benefit assessments as set forth in the annual report of the engineer of work and the levying and collection of assessments set forth therein for fiscal year 2017-2018 for the Folkerth Chevron Development Project Number 1740, landscaping and lighting benefit assessment district and the street maintenance benefit assessment area pursuant to Resolution Number 97-128. Councilmember Esquer?
Yes.
Councilmember DeHart?
Yes.
Councilmember Booblaack?
Yes.
Mayor Soyseth?
Yes.
And that resolution carries as well. Thank you very much, council, for your endurance through that process. Now come scheduled matters. Before us now is the items A through, excuse me, 8A through 8C. And once again, we're going to be handling these items concurrently. We will be voting on both, separately, on both the resolution and the vote on the motions for the different resolutions involved with each. It should be noted that council did receive a letter or fax from Ms. Mendez on this, on these particular items. That will be filed officially in the minutes of this evening's proceedings to ensure inclusion. Would you like to speak now?
I would, thank you.
Thank you very much.
Good evening, Vice Mayor, councilmembers, and mayor. I will be speaking, as Vice Mayor stated, on scheduled matters 8A, 8B, and 8C. These are all very similar in nature and hosted by the same organization. On July 7, 2017, applicant Edwina Rocha of Sacred Heart Catholic Church submitted two separate special event permit applications. These applications were to host the following events: Our Lady of Fatima celebration procession as well as the Our Lady of Guadalupe celebration procession. Each closure has been requested for pedestrian safety, event purposes, and to allow cleanup and setup time beforehand. Our Lady of Fatima celebration event and closure requests have been proposed for the following specified times to accommodate event purposes. The first procession in the series is proposed to be held on Saturday, September 30, from 7:00 p.m. to 10:00 p.m. The closure request for this procession includes Lyons Avenue between North Rose Street and Colorado Avenue, Colorado Avenue between Lyons Avenue and Cooper Avenue, and Cooper Avenue between Colorado Avenue and Oak Street. The second procession is proposed to be held on Sunday, October 1, from 9:30 a.m. to 12:00 p.m. And the associated closure includes Lyons Avenue between North Rose Street and Colorado Avenue, Colorado Avenue between Lyons Avenue and Cooper Avenue, and Cooper Avenue between Colorado Avenue and Oak Street. A third procession is proposed to take place during this event. That item is not before you tonight, however, was submitted as a special event, to the special event committee at a later date. To accommodate the public notification timeline that council has set, that item will be brought back before you on September 26. The second application submitted was for the Feast of Our Lady of Guadalupe celebration procession. This procession and closure request has been proposed to take place on Tuesday, December 12, from 5:00 p.m. to 8:00 p.m. This event will only host one procession. And the closure request includes North Rose Street between Cooper Avenue and Cahill Avenue, Cahill Avenue between North Rose Street and Bell Street, Bell Street between Cahill Avenue and Lyons Avenue, and Lyons Avenue between Bell Street and Oak Street. City of Turlock Traffic Engineering has reviewed these closure requests. The Special Event Committee has reviewed the application. Property owners directly affected by all of these closures have been notified and invited to this evening's public hearing. And we have received, as Vice Mayor stated, we did receive one letter via fax from a community member that is on, has been green-sheated for your consideration. And if you have any questions, I'd be happy to answer them.
Are there questions here at the council? No questions, comments? Public comments? Questions or comments from the public? Okay, bringing it back to the council. Just keep in mind, we're going to be addressing first, in each case, the resolution pertaining to SEQA, and secondarily, then, the resolution per item pertaining to the actual applications themselves. So what is the will of the council with respect to the resolution pertaining to the Saturday event?
There's two, they have to take them separately, right?
We do have to take them separately, and the first one is for SEQA.
Challenge to Saturday.
Okay.
Second.
Okay, the SEQA resolution has been advanced by councilmember Booblaack, seconded by councilmember Esquer. Please read that resolution for us and take the roll.
Determining the closure of Oak Street between Cooper Avenue and Lyons Avenue, Lyons Avenue between Oak Street and North Rose Street, and North Rose Street between Lyons Avenue and Cooper Avenue for Sacred Heart Catholic Church to host the Feast of Our Lady of Fatima celebration procession is exempt from the provisions of the California Environmental Quality Act, SEQA, in accordance with Section 15304, minor alterations to land of the SEQA Councilmember Esquer?
Yes.
Councilmember DeHart?
Yes.
Councilmember Booblaack?
Yes.
Council?
Yes.
Mayor Soyseth?
Yes.
Wow, that was efficient. That was great. Okay, now come.
Is that my resolution?
Yes, this is the resolution.
Second.
Pertaining to the actual application itself. It has been moved by councilmember Booblaack, seconded by councilmember Esquer. Could you read the resolution pertaining to that permit and call the roll?
Approving the special event permit application for the Feast of Our Lady of Fatima celebration procession hosted by Sacred Heart Catholic Church authorizing the associated closure of Oak Street between Cooper Avenue and Lyons Avenue, Lyons Avenue between Oak Street and North Rose Street, and North Rose Street between Lyons Avenue and Cooper Avenue for pedestrian safety on Saturday, September 30, 2017, from 7:00 p.m. through 10:00 p.m., and authorizing the city manager to apply appropriate conditions and restrictions on the street closure. Councilmember Esquer?
Yes.
Councilmember DeHart?
Yes.
Councilmember Booblaack?
Yes.
Mayor Soyseth?
Yes.
Also now, under item B.
Is that the SEQA resolution?
Perfect.
Second.
Moved by councilmember Booblaack, seconded by councilmember Esquer pertaining to the SEQA, the SEQA guideline.
Determining the closure of Lyons Avenue between North Rose Street and Colorado Avenue, Colorado Avenue between Lyons Avenue and Cooper Avenue, and Cooper Avenue between Colorado Avenue and Oak Street for Sacred Heart Catholic Church to host the Feast of Our Lady of Fatima celebration procession is exempt from the provisions of the California Environmental Quality Act, SEQA, in accordance with Section 15304, minor alterations to land of the SEQA guidelines. Councilmember Esquer?
Yes.
Councilmember DeHart?
Yes.
Councilmember Booblaack?
Yes.
Mayor Soyseth?
Yes.
And is there a second resolution for the date?
First. Second.
It's been moved and seconded. Please read the resolution pertaining to the application.
Approving the special event permit application for the Feast of Our Lady of Fatima celebration procession is hosted by Sacred Heart Catholic Church authorizing the associated closure of Lyons Avenue between North Rose Street and Colorado Avenue, Colorado Avenue between Lyons Avenue and Cooper Avenue, and Cooper Avenue between Colorado Avenue and Oak Street for pedestrian safety on Sunday, October 1, 2017, from 9:30 a.m. through 12 o'clock p.m., and authorizing the city manager to apply appropriate conditions and restrictions on the street closure. Councilmember Esquer?
Yes.
Councilmember DeHart?
Yes.
Councilmember Booblaack?
Yes.
Mayor Soyseth?
Yes.
And that resolution carries as well. Now, item C pertaining to the Feast of Our Lady of Guadalupe procession, initial resolution pertaining to SEQA, what is the will?
Move to advance.
Second.
Removed by councilmember Esquer, seconded by councilmember Booblaack pertaining to the SEQA resolution.
Determining the closure, closure of North Rose Street between Cooper Avenue and Cahill Avenue, Cahill Avenue between North Rose Street and Bell Street, Bell Street between Cahill Avenue and Lyons Avenue, and Lyons Avenue between Bell Street and Oak Street for the Feast of Our Lady of Guadalupe procession celebration hosted by Sacred Heart Catholic Church is exempt from the provisions of the California Environmental Quality Act, SEQA, in accordance with Section 15304, minor alterations to land of the SEQA guidelines. Councilmember Esquer?
Yes.
Councilmember DeHart?
Yes.
Councilmember Booblaack?
Yes.
Mayor Soyseth?
Yes.
That resolution passes. Now pertaining to the actual application.
Move to advance.
Moved by councilmember Esquer, seconded by councilmember Booblaack. Clerk, could you please read the resolution regarding the application, permit application, and call the roll?
Approving the special event permit application for the Feast of Our Lady of Guadalupe procession celebration hosted by Sacred Heart Catholic Church authorizing the associated closure of North Rose Street between Cooper Avenue and Cahill Avenue, Cahill Avenue between North Rose Street and Bell Street, Bell Street between Cahill Avenue and Lyons Avenue, and Lyons Avenue between Bell Street and Oak Street for pedestrian safety on Tuesday, December 12, 2017, from 5:00 p.m. to 8:00 p.m., and authorizing the city manager to apply appropriate conditions and restrictions on the street closure. Councilmember Esquer?
Yes.
Councilmember DeHart?
Yes.
Councilmember Booblaack?
Yes.
Mayor Soyseth?
Yes.
And the resolution regarding that permit passes as well. Thank you very much, council.
Thank you very much, Vice Mayor and council.
You bet, you bet. Now before us, item F, request to reject all bids submitted for RFP Number 16-378 Tourism Strategy and approve Amendment 1 to an agreement with North Star Destination Strategies of Nashville, Tennessee to include the additional scope of work for the tourism strategy. Good evening, Ms. Pitt.
Good evening, Vice Mayor and members of council. As you might remember, that last fall, the city issued, or late last summer, the city issued three RFPs, one for the update to the Economic Development Strategic Plan, a second one for marketing and branding, and a third one for the development of the tourism strategy. The work was awarded to ADE on the Economic Development Strategic Plan, and then the work was awarded for marketing and branding for North Star Destination Strategies. In reviewing the submissions for the tourism, the outside and inside review panel felt it provided the greatest consistency to have North Star Destination Strategies complete the tourism portion of the scope of work associated with third RFP 16-378. There is also somewhat of a cost savings in not having to replicate the data collection and research associated with that. So the item before you is the rejection of the submissions of bids and awarding an amended scope of work to North Star Destination Strategies for the tourism portion of the scope. And I'd be happy to answer any questions.
Other questions here?
Yes, Mary, and I do have a quick question.
Sure.
I did notice on the bids, there was two bids that were lower than 55,000. So do you?
So professional services agreements are not subject to lowest bidder. You can select based on a whole variety of things. And in fact, when you review proposals, the submission of the dollar amount associated with that agreement is in a separate envelope, that you're not to consider that as part of the review of the scope and their response.
And then just a question clarification. Did, did North Star actually bid on the tourism piece?
Yes.
Okay, so it's not just something that they're picking up out of their goodness?
No, they actually included the tourism in their marketing and branding component as all one proposal.
Okay, great. Any comments from the public, questions at this point? Okay, bringing it back to council.
Both motions have been advanced by councilmember Booblaack, seconded by councilmember Esquer.
Go ahead and read those motions if you would, clerk, and call the roll.
Rejecting all bids submitted for request for proposal, RFP Number 16378 Tourism Strategy. Councilmember Esquer?
Yes.
Councilmember DeHart?
Yes.
Councilmember Booblaack?
Yes.
Mayor Soyseth?
Yes.
And both of those motions carry. Thank you very much, council. And thank you as well, Ms. Pitt, for your attention to those matters. I know that that's been a long time coming to get those things left and actually in work. And now before us, any matters now too late for the agenda or non-agenda items? None? Okay, council items for future consideration? Yes?
I did have a question. I'm not sure if it's, I probably addressed to Allison, but I'm sure, is there update or status on the National Guard Armory? Do we know when we'll be talking about that or what proposals?
In regards to the status of the armory, we are still waiting for the California Military Department to vacate the premises. The last I checked with them, they were at the mercy of their, their federal budget and trying to make decisions based on funding available. And so it's going to be a little bit of a wait and see. And if you recall, once we do get a date that they will be vacating, they still have to address the lead dust that, that was there from the former indoor shooting range. And so I would hesitate to give you an estimate on the timeframe. We're really at their, their mercy in terms of when they are ready to vacate the facility. So I will continue to provide you with periodic updates if that's what you would like.
Yes, so I just, so the lead cleanup will not take place until after they vacate?
That's correct. They have to be out of the building in order for that process to take place.
Perhaps we can just have city manager in our tickler file, perhaps, once that happens, we'll get, just, it'll be before us so that we get that current update. Thank you very much. Good point, thanks, Gil. Any other comments or future, I'm sorry, future consideration? No council comments? Seeing none? Closed session this evening. We're going to be, here, I probably better put these on again so I can see. We're going to be dealing with 12A this evening only, and that is described in the agenda. 12B and C have been removed from our agenda this evening, and they will be addressed at a later time. That being the case, is there a motion to adjourn?
So moved.
It's been advanced by councilmember Esquer, seconded by the mayor. All those in favor?
Aye.
Thank you very much. Good evening, folks. Thank you for being here with us. It's good to see you, former Mayor Bates. I like your new doo, sir. It's good to see you. Take care.
So.
How are you doing up there? Are we going? Going that way or that way?
I'm not sure.